The show is happy.
The show is happy.
Everybody's happy. All right. The point in time, five thirty arrived, like to call the Tuesday, December tenth, two thousand and nineteen, for me, the whole meeting to order, follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderwoman Turner. Alderman Fulginsy.
Here.
Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderwoman DeSensio.
Present.
Alderman McMenamin.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donilon.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, a quorum is present.
All right, great. Accept a motion for approval of the November twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen committee meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Madam Treasurer, will you please present your treasuries report?
Thank you, Chair Proctor. The corporate fund in the month of November had a beginning balance of twelve million nine hundred thirty-two thousand six hundred twenty-eight dollars. We took in total receipts of nine million two hundred eighty-five thousand four hundred fifty dollars. We had total disbursements in the month of November of ten million fifty-nine thousand four hundred two dollars, which left the corporate fund with an ending balance of twelve million one hundred fifty-eight thousand six hundred seventy-six dollars. This concludes my report, Chair Proctor.
Thank you, Treasurer. Any questions for the Treasurer? Seen none, moving on. Are there any questions regarding the OBM contract report? Think we all got that?
We could get that a little earlier. Appreciate it.
Any questions on it? Well, as you have questions, if you review it later, please submit them to Bill.
Thank you.
All right. Any presentations, Mr. Clerk?
No, sir.
No presentations, and moving on. Ordinances tabled to remain in committee, Mr. Clerk, would you please read those ordinances?
Two thousand and seventeen, one oh three, two thousand and eighteen, one ten, two thousand and nineteen, zero zero eight, two thousand and nineteen, two seventy-six, two thousand and nineteen, four thirty.
Anybody want any action on any of those ordinances?
No.
Seen none? All right. Now for ordinances for committee consideration. Mr. Clerk, would you read C W L P?
Two thousand and nineteen, five oh seven, an ordinance authorizing a one-year contract extension and additional funding in an amount of seventy-six thousand fifty dollars under contract number UW sixteen dash twelve dash six three dash carbon dioxide with Prexar Incorporated for a total amount not to exceed three hundred and eighty thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move consent.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Two thousand and nineteen, five oh eight, an ordinance authorizing a one-year contract extension and additional funding in an amount of twenty-nine thousand two hundred dollars under contract number UW seventeen dash zero one dash eight six dash and hydro ammonia with Tanner Industries Incorporated for a total amount payable not to exceed one hundred and sixteen thousand eight hundred dollars for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move consent.
Second.
Any discussion? Seen none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Two thousand and nineteen, five oh nine, an ordinance authorizing a one-year contract extension and additional funding in an amount of three hundred and nine thousand dollars under contract UW nineteen dash eleven dash six four, ferric sulfate with Chimera Water Solutions Incorporated for a total amount payable not to exceed six hundred and eighteen thousand for the Office of Public Utilities.
Consent.
Any discussion, questions? Seen none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Two thousand and nineteen, five ten, an ordinance authorizing additional funding in an amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars under contract number UE eighteen dash zero one dash seven two with Roland Machinery Company for heavy equipment, maintenance, and repairs at Dollman Plant for a total amount not to exceed seven hundred and seventy-five thousand for the Office of Public Utilities.
Consent.
Second.
Any discussion? Seen none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Two thousand and nineteen, five eleven, an ordinance accepting bid and authorizing the execution of contract UE twenty dash ten dash five six dash line clearance services for a three-year term for the Electric Division with Wright Tree Service Incorporated in an amount not to exceed six million dollars for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for debate.
Second.
Any discussion? Yes. Alderman Redpath.
Mayor, we had talked in the past about doing something different with this. Is there any movement in that direction, or can you tell me?
Yeah, I'd ask either John Davis or Doug to come forward, and what the Alderman's referring to is bringing the tree service in-house in light of the, I guess, the trimming methods used by Nelson's.
No, we have, I mean, one, Nelson does not have this contract. They were not the low bid this time, so it's Wright Tree Service coming in to do it. Wright Tree Service has been doing this work for Ameren for years, and they've been in most the area around us. You know, our linemen, even though they do minor tree trimming, we do not have the lineman that could come in and do this work on a daily basis, you know, with the number of crews that we need to do a hundred-plus miles of distribution and transmission lines a year.
So what would it take to bring this in the city, and what, at what expense? Do you have any idea?
I, I mean, just from-
And I'm not talking about using linemen, but these people-
Well, these are linemen that do, I mean, these are IBW-
Right.
-employees that do this work.
Okay, but, but I think what the mayor and I discussed is bringing them in, starting a whole different crew to do tree trimming services and, and bring those jobs back into the city of Springfield.
Oh, we've never studied that, so I don't know what it cost would be.
One thing concerned that we would have on bringing that services inside the city of Springfield is workman's comp claims associated with that, and it's kind of dangerous work. So with that, that we would also have a concern, I guess, with that. That's kind of hard to put a dollar figure to, I think, but that would expose us to more, you know, incidents like that that could be, you know, put a strain more on us than versus contracting the work out.
And, you know, the thing is, is that we do have, still have workman's comps claims for everything we do. I mean, police fire, linemen, everybody else, so that's a, that's a expense that probably needs to be, I, I mean, it's not going to go away. We're going to have workman's comps claims, but I think we should really take a look at what the expense is to bring those services back into the city.
Alderman Hanauer, do you have a question?
Yeah.
Well, I just want to make sure, and I think the mayor kind of alluded to it, we're, you know, we've had complaints in the past about how, how, what was it, Wright-
About how Nelson Tree Service-
Nelson, I mean, how they, how they would cut the trees and they would just look terrible.
They do, they trim trees to a ten-foot radius around the lines for safety purposes. That is the, that is the regulations that they're required to go by, that's the ANSI standards, that they, they trim to the lineman arborist's standards, the national arborist's standards, they trim to all the standards that everybody else trims. They trim no differently than they do if it's in the city of Springfield or if it's across the street in the county. It's, they trim the exact same way that Wright did for Ameren, as which trimmed throughout the country, and those are the regulations for it to maintain the safety of people and safety of our, and reliability of our lines.
Now, I know in Missouri, they, you are not allowed to, if you have trees underneath the power lines, they, you're not allowed to have them. They have a, they have a certain buffer that they don't allow trees along power lines, and they'll cut them, they cut them down so that they don't, they don't get into this and you don't have reoccurring. I'm not, I'm not necessarily in favor of that, but what about, and I think this is, this comes back from my predecessor, what about looking at cutting some of these trees down and putting a smaller tree that's not going to grow so, so tall, you still got a tree there, and then you don't have the recurring cost of every five years, you don't, you know, it, it'll slowly cut down your cost. I, I mean, it's something that we ought to look at, and I know, Tim, you, you tried this for years and years, but get, get a smaller tree instead of something that's kind of go-
Well, a lot of these trees are not on right-of-way that we can do that with their own private property. We can trim the trees away from our lines, but we don't have the ability to go in there and cut the trees down.
Okay.
We trim them away if they choose to cut the tree the rest of the way down. They can do that after we do our line trimming, and then, we, we do, we talk to, you know, developers, you know, when we have lines and new centers going in, or people are, are, they go, they go to, you know, Prairie, Pleasant Nursery. We talk to Pleasant Nursery and all the different nurseries around about what type of trees to put around our lines already. I mean, if we wanted to get, start a project where we cut trees down and replace them, we need a lot more money than what we're asking for here.
Did Alderman Redpath, you did more, or you done? Okay. Mayor, I think you won the same one.
Yeah, with regards to trees, we asked the urban forestry commission to take a look at that and do replacements and come up with a plan of action. Naperville, I know they do tree trimming because they have their own electric division, so we asked to look at that as well, so hopefully we'll have firm answers. But going back to Alderman Redpath, that's what we'll have to take a look at, is what's it mean to bring a crew in, as far as the costs associated with that, not necessarily the whole contract, but-
I mean, I, I just think, I mean, we're looking at ten crews, three to four people a crew, that, that this contract is, that's thirty to forty employees if we were bringing this in, in-house to do.
Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you. This isn't directly related, although I just want to let you know, I'm, I'm very interested in knowing what it would cost and what our options are with having our own city crews. I think that would be nice to have this be city employees. But one thing, I, I always, I'm learning things very quickly on this job, and one thing I'm learning very quickly is when someone's trees are being trimmed, because I get phone calls, emails, Facebook messages about someone was in my backyard, there's a pile of branches all over the place, and kind of the, i- if we need to, kind of looking forward for, for next year for, for trimming, having some sort of a notification to neighbors that-
That there's, we, we notify through, Julia Ferber, all the neighborhood associations who aren't going to be in their areas, so they should know through the neighborhood association.
Not everyone has a neighborhood association. I'm, I'm not as blessed as, as Alderwoman DeSensio, I, I have fewer neighborhood associations.
No one's as blessed as I am.
No one is.
And, and they, they should remove all the branches that they cut down.
And they do, oh, no, and they do, and that, that's not my complaint. The thing is, is that, first of all, for some people, it would be nice to have advanced notice, and if that's something that, there's a map that's posted on the city's pages, is we're going to be trimming in these areas, and then, you know, city council can know about it, and I can put out notice. But also, I, I just got a lot of repeat calls with concerns that, you know, there's a delay between the cutting and the branches piled up, and then they come and pick it up, and I understand all of that, I do.
There shouldn't be, they should have those branches picked up at the end of the day. That's the way they cut them, and they remove them at the end of the day.
That hasn't happened in Ward Eight, and I know that.
Ward Six.
And, and everyone has been very friendly about, you know, okay, they'll be right back, you know, the crews come on different days, the pickup crew will be following the cutting crew, but there needs to be a little better advanced knowledge to the, to the homeowners, and, and then, and better coordination of the pickups, and, you know, I, I felt bad. I had, I had one constituent who, because of the horrible way their trees were cut, and, and I understand what they have to do, but they just took them down. They, they paid a private contractor to come in after the fact and just take them all out because it, they were going to die anyway, I mean, well-
The, the tree trimming method they use won't kill the tree. Talk, and arborists will tell you that.
Well, maybe the residents were going to die from looking at them. There, it was, I will tell you also the one on, there's one on Chatham Road that just scares me to every day because it's, it's just really ugly, but that's, that's a different story. But I'm just saying, kind of as we move forward, I'm very much in favor of bringing this back in-house, and then we can just have you yell at your own employees about it.
I'm not even aware of the last time we did it in-house. We say bring it back in-house. I'm not aware of the last time we did this ourselves, other than, you know, for a minor, if there was a, a reason we had to send a crew out. In my thirty-plus years with the city, I think it's always been contracted out, but we can look into that and see.
Okay.
But on the pickup, so, I, you know, I guess I need to clarify, the branches and everything should be picked up at the end of the day. Now, they may have some larger logs that we would go back and pick up afterwards. Maybe that's what we're referring to. If that's it, then we can definitely get a better handle on that.
And that could be. They, they just said that things were left there, but, you know, people get concerned, and if they know ahead of time someone's going to be in your backyard because this is a safety issue. People understand trimming, clearing around the lines, but we need a little better advanced notification to people that they're going to be in your neighborhood in this, you know, the next week or two weeks.
And we can work on that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Alderman McMenamin, I think, had a question, and then we'll go to-
This contract always generates a lot of discussion, and so let's not forget the good news here. The good news is that we had some competition for this contract, and that Wright came in at about ten, fifteen percent, maybe more in some categories, under Nelson's. So that's the good news, and the good news is also that, I don't know who is responsible at City Warlight and Power, but someone, you know, made sure that other bidders were aware that this contract was coming up, and so we had three bids. In the past, we've oftentimes just had one bid, so that's the real good news here. And, and, you know, with new crews out there, you know, maybe we can have some more, you know, oversight and supervision, and that's an ongoing, you know, challenge, of course. I think the announcements at times have been posted in our city announcements, so that's available to everybody, and if, maybe that doesn't always happen, but I know at times it has happened, and we've got the, the word out through the city announcements that our city communications director puts out, so that's available to a hundred percent of everyone who wants to look at the, the city announcements. And, let's see, John, you already mentioned that we've already got ten crews out there, so, you know, I think it's an admirable goal to give, bring this work inside, but it, it would require a lot of advanced planning to make that happen, to, to come up with thirty trained, highly skilled individuals that can go off the highest booms to get the most dangerous limbs out there. It's, it's not an easy challenge. And, and then, you also mentioned, besides the labor, you know, we've got, how many trucks out there? Ten trucks? How many chippers out there? That's a million to two million dollars of cost that the city would have to undertake to bring these crews inside, because right now, all the equipment, in substantial part is, was, was with Nelson's, now it's going to be with Wright's. So it's, it's a worthy idea, but it takes a lot of advanced planning, so, but the good news again is, we got a, a contract that's vastly less expensive than what Nelson's would have been. So congratulations to the utility.
Go ahead.
I, I understand where you're going with that, Alderman, and I, I, I take all that into consideration, but, you know, we don't know because we've not done it, and so I think it's important for us to go out and look and see what's going on. I, I just suggested to the mayor that we, we need to contact Naperville and see how they do it. Obviously, it's a, it's something to be worthwhile for the city, and in the over, in the long run, I think it'll end up saving us money, so.
Yep. Alderman Gregory.
I just had a quick question. You were saying that, that the people we contract cut the trees, and then we may have to go back, be in the city and get some bigger logs, or is that-
Yeah, sometimes, you know, when they, they do their trimming, if there's an ad measure, maybe a four-inch log or so, they won't go through their chipper, they'll know fast, and we'll go back and pick those logs up. So in order, in order to allow them to move to the next tree and keep working.
Okay. Where is, where is Wright and Nelson located, their home offices?
Neither of them are in, in Springfield. I believe, I don't think either of them are in Illinois, actually.
Okay.
At their home office.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this?
By the local.
All right. So we have a motion for debate. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Two thousand and nineteen, five twelve, an ordinance approving payment to Tremble Incorporated doing business as Tremble Navigation Limited in an amount not to exceed one hundred and fourteen thousand one hundred and fifty-six dollars for an annual software maintenance and related services for a one-year term for the outage management systems for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move consent.
Second.
Any discussion? Seen none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Two thousand and nineteen, five thirteen, an ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement with the Illi- Illinois Secretary of State for the upgrade of relay packages and state-owned switch gears located at the Klein substation for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move consent.
Second.
Any discussion? Seen none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Two thousand and nineteen, five fourteen, an ordinance authorizing a generator and interconnection agreement in relation to the MISO J seven fifty project between the city of Springfield, Zep Grand Prairie Wind LLC and Mid-Continent Independent Systems Operator Incorporated, MISO, for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move to consent.
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, I just want to, and I, I just want to make perfectly clear that this is just interconnection, this has nothing to do with us buying any wind power, any, anything like that. Is that correct? I just, just want to-
So clarification-
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Clarification, Corporation Council, if they tried to do a purchase of wind power, they have to come back to the city council for that?
Correct. In other words, this, this is a, just very simply is where required because of the place that the proposed wind farm wants to connect, and it happens, happens to be that connection to MISO. So it actually is a pass-through, they'll end up actually reimbursing the city for the cost of this.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seen none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Two thousand and nineteen, five sixteen, an ordinance approving the First Amendment to the restated and amended contract for sale and purchase of coal with Arch Coal Sales Company Incorporated for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for debate.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Do you have somebody, you have one speaker? All right, if, or call them. Roger Dennison.
Just wondering information, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Dennison, are you going to talk about this tonight and try to talk about it tomorrow night, too?
Yes, sir.
Remember, I'm the chairman tomorrow night.
I got that, sir.
All right.
Appreciate the opportunity to address the council. Real quick, folks are probably aware that Foresight did solicit, or put an unsolicited bid in for the, the coal contract. Couple reasons I just want to go through real quick. First thing is Article seventeen, you know, that's part of the current contract, does state from December one, twenty eighteen to May twenty nineteen, you can do a ten-year extension with the arch mine. It's supposed to have been voted on by July twenty-one, or approved by the party's respective board, is what it says. So I've been watching all this. I didn't see any of that happening, I didn't see anything voted on, it was unclear where it was at, at this point in life. So it did say that if that wasn't done by July one, twenty nineteen, the city may solicit bids or proposals, and again, the work would begin after December thirty-first, twenty twenty, understanding if the city did do that, Arch naturally has right of first refusal on whatever terms and conditions would come in that contract. So that was a big thing, but then while we were sitting here watching and waiting this to go, naturally, I was going to come and bid on this work again, is the IRP came up. So when the IRP came up, it was kind of a new twist in here, you know, when you see Dollman one, Dollman two, Dollman three going away, and even scenarios saying Dollman four, I'm going, well, this is crazy. I mean, this used to be the lowest-cost power plants in the Midwest, and the plants are going away, so the, and, and the coal prices are, again, for the fifteenth time or whatever I've addressed, folks, are not correct, they're way out of market, coal prices. I've been pushing for an RFP to go see. I knew we could save Dollman three. We felt we've been, you know, in front of folks here, and naturally, we know Arch has again right of first refusal, no matter what happens. If I don't get the work, the thing is, now if the plants go away, nobody's going to have the work, and it's a scrub utility, folks. This thing still is going to be a gem in the future. Part of me also says the reason that nobody's adjusted these coal prices with the IRP, it's easier for me to slide in what wind power could cost, or solar, because these overinflated coal prices are up here. We need to get the right coal prices in here, so, and avoid the women and men losing their jobs out at the power plant. So naturally, that's been my biggest thing, is pushing for the, getting the right coal prices in here, and instead of just coming babbling, I wanted to be forthright, and I've shared with the company, we put it on paper, folks. So y'all should have this in front of you, and don't get crazy, it's not too busy, we're just going to talk a couple points on this. This is basically our bid that we had in versus the bid that Arch had put in, and just real quick, if you look in twenty twenty-one, the Arch delivered price is thirty-nine nineteen versus Foresight's price of thirty-three eighty-three, so it's six bucks and sixteen cents a ton cheaper to take the Foresight bid, and use that in the IRP, folks. That's what I'm pushing for here, again. Twenty twenty-five, if you look at that price, it's forty-one eighty-two versus thirty-four ninety-four. At the end of this period, it's six bucks and eighty-eight cents a ton, times a million tons, or whatever it is, six point eight million bucks. So this is what I'm saying, there still hasn't been an RFP issued, and if you look at the right side of this, you've seen this little chart, I just cut this piece out that's out of the IRP. So all I did was put it to make it relate. The little yellow box there is the flat coal price that was in there, that's Arch's current coal price. The green one is really not relative now, because that was the high coal price, Arch's price is not there. If you look at Arch's price right now, the fifth year's two bucks a million BTU delivered, and that's the reference case we talked about, so they're right on target at twenty twenty-five of that reference case. I've told folks, we need to run those RFP all along at the flat coal price, which was never done for Dollman three, it was done for Dollman four, and I said, the real current coal markets are less than the flat coal price. So the piece of paper that we've put in front of folks, the unsolicited bid, is much less than the flat coal price, it's where the market is, and if you look at it, it's basically the same market as it was the last time we reopened, and nothing's changed except the market's got worse, folks. So that's all I want to say at this point, and I've been in front of you plenty of times, but, I mean, the point is, I wanted an RFP, we didn't get one, that I know of, we didn't know the plans, and when I heard that this was being worked with Arch, I want, we, our company submitted an unsolicited proposal, so willing to answer any questions that folks may have.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Smith, Alderman McMenamin?
Well, I, this maybe is directed to our city attorney. There's been a great deal of concern about the financial standing of Foresight, and the parent company, Murray, is, is in bankruptcy, as I understand it. Do you wish to make any comments regarding how this affects a long-term coal supply and the ability to, to, to perform when we're dealing with a, a financially distressed company? Mr. Corporation Counsel.
Just very briefly, too, as the mayor knows, and C W L P is analyzing the proposal received from Foresight, and has provided them a list of questions primarily related to their current economic situation, so we should be in a better position to discuss that. Effectively, there is a, will be a comparison of the pricing and the primary, one of the primary concerns is just the viability of the offer because of the nature of the, as, as the speaker has mentioned, just the, the coal situation in general is suffering a lot of stress simply because of the market. And so, but the utility has submitted a list of questions, the, we did contact the company after receiving this, and were told to direct questions to their company representative, who is, I believe it's a Mr. O'Neill. So a letter was sent to him today, asking for some very specific information regarding the proposal. One of the pieces of information that was requested that actually is on this chart, was the breakout for the trucking versus the coal price. So that was not included with their proposal, it is here, so presumably that's something that they'll end up providing some more detail on. So we, there has been a very detailed request for information that will be available by the council meeting, presumably. And it is a matter of, just to really associate, or trying to balance the risk with the price.
Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, thanks. Roger, do, do you guys have act, I, I think, what, before, you guys weren't able to take Roger, do you guys have, I think, what, before, you guys weren't able to take our ash, did you guys get permitted?
I am actually working on that ash permit. We will get permitted. I've talked to the agencies. It's actually part of the mitigation program when I reopened the Exxon mine down there, the Shea Mine. So CWLP's ash is in there now. I would have only been able to do it at, like, 2019, probably would have been the soonest, if you recall the last re opener. I could have expedited that because we would have shipped two, or Arch would have shipped two years, had it worked that way. So I didn't spend the additional money, but I've been speaking with all of the director of OMM at DNR, EPA, all the folks, I'm ready to go this next step, which includes CWLP's ash and also another Illinois customer I'm permitting with. So there's no reason we shouldn't have, we will not get the ash, and we probably know some folks in the room that could verify what I'm saying with the agencies.
What about the, there was a mine in, it was Hillsborough, right, that had the hotspot that you guys, is that open now?
We're developing, reopening now. We say the longwall itself sealed and left it. So currently, we're going forward now to reopen the mine. There's folks down there, and I don't want to get into a big longwall, how longwalls are developed, speech, but you have to develop another area to be able to go put a longwall together and mine that. So we're currently underway doing that, sir.
Are you aware of the insurance settlement with Foresight and their insurers regarding that mine? They were paid about $90 million because of the losses of the mine, or they're, are they going to be in a position where they're going to have to refund that money if they reopen the mine?
I think I know that answer, but I'm not going to answer it because that's way beyond my skis, sir. So I would put that on the list of questions to have the right people answer that.
Well, I think they're waiting for an additional $25 million to be paid. I think they're waiting from the insurance company. And so those were some of the issues, to try to get a real understanding of actually what's happening.
Yeah, and I would include those on the letter, sir, because they're, Mr. O'Neill gets.
The current operator, the general partner that operates Foresight is in bankruptcy. They are currently operating as a debtor in possession, subject to the bankruptcy's court's approval from moment to moment. Now, if that status changes, that means that control of Foresight is lost. Do you understand, in terms of just the way the, the way the process works is very fluid at this moment?
Again, I'd put that on, have our legal folks clarify.
Correct.
For you.
Those were part of the filings that Foresight made just in the last month in connection with the SEC? Are you familiar with any of those?
No, you're beyond my skis, sir. I'm not a lawyer, just a coal miner.
Alder Willen Connelly.
Thank you. So I have a question, kind of follow-up with Alderman Hanauer. This proposal that you have doesn't deal with disposal of ash, correct?
No, it does. Yes, we've put in.
And I apologize, because I didn't see it before getting here tonight. So what's your, could you just explain to me, what's your proposal for ash disposal?
On the price?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Let me, before I just spout it out. We were at, it's $8, $9.25 year one, including trucking, will be the disposal, the disposal fee is.
$9, I'm sorry, what's the unit on that?
Per ton.
Okay.
It's a per ton. So we're, our disposal fee is $4.90, whereas Arch's disposal fee is $7. We do have a transportation disadvantage, so basically, the ash disposal of both places is basically the same.
So.
To make crystal clear, Foresight does not have a permit to accept the city's ash at this point.
And that was my next question.
And I have to have that before December or January 1 of 2021. If, if the city did away with the Arch contract, which, again, Arch has right of first refusal, so, but if we were required to pick up this contract at the end of the term, I definitely have to have a disposal worked out for CWLP, January 1 of 2021.
Alderman Hanauer.
I guess what concerns me is, in a potential bankruptcy situation, we enter into a contract with you guys, and, and I like the prices, I'm not going to lie, the prices are good, but, but what happens if, you know, do we have a guarantee that, that these prices are going to be valid because of, you know, it's going to have to go through a bankruptcy judge, I'm sure would have to approve this to, based on what, what it would be to, going forward, if you could, that the mine can survive that kind of low pricing and that. The other thing is, you know, what guarantee do we have that, that, you know, they, they just don't shut, shut it down, and then we're really, really in trouble, you know? I mean, these are concerns that, that I have. I do like the pricing, and I'm not going to lie to you about that.
Foresight is not in bankruptcy. Murray Energy, yes. So again, Corporation Counsel, the questions, I would send those and get those clarified by somebody besides me. I'm the wrong person to start spouting legal anything in reference to that. I pretty well keep close to home here in Springfield. But I know you'll get the answers you need. I guess what I'd also do is look in the archives back when I asked the same questions when Arch was in bankruptcy during the last re opener. And Corporation Counsel told us all what the rules were with bankruptcy, plus I and Bob Gardner both were at the El Carte Mine when it went through bankruptcy, back when. And we've, then the CWLP still got coal from the El Carte Mine, so I'm not a bankruptcy attorney.
Just to talk, just very briefly, there's a huge difference in the situation that the city found itself just by way of, I realize everybody already knows this, but we had a standing contract with Arch. The bankruptcy court affirmed the contract. It remained a valid contract. The circumstance here is almost in reverse of that, that if for any reason that the city would enter into an agreement with Foresight, then Foresight would subsequently, in the next 12 months, or 18 months, or 24 months, or 36 months, file for bankruptcy because it finds itself in that position, then that contract could be rejected. So that's the uncertainty, the ability to perform, the inability to confirm the contractual obligation of the performance, because if the, if the city entered into a long-term contract with Foresight and then Viper or Arch would close and Foresight would file bankruptcy, then that would lead to closing Daulman 4. And that's the scenario, that is the, it's the uncertainty, it's the business risk of the invitation of a low price when there is a serious question of performance, and most of the CWLP's letter is, is related to how can there be a guarantee of performance? And so that's what's been directed back to Foresight. And we will have a direct communication in a very serious way in terms of what actually is happening. Because what you're, what you're trying to entice the city to do is incredibly risky. And under those circumstances, the council just needs to very carefully understand the circumstances, because, for example, Boyd Company, we had them look at this, they recommended continuing with Arch, and one of the questions they raised was the viability of Viper going, or the viability of Foresight going forward simply because of the way the coal market is. And that's no blame of Foresight. That's not something Foresight did. It's just the reality, and Arch has really gone through the process, they're at the other end of it, whereas Murray has just started it minimally a year or two years if they come out of it. And if Foresight files, which is probably going to happen, then there's no telling if the, if the creditors will allow the company to be reformed or they'll just sell everything off.
Again, I ask those questions, they're great questions. Because Foresight Energy is the lowest-cost, highest-producing, biggest coal mine in Illinois. Murray Energy is the biggest, largest underground coal producer in the United States. I'm sure other folks have had the questions. We don't have a gun to our head here, because again, it's covered through December 31, 2020. So I don't like the word enticed, but that's just me. I mean, these are, we bid last time, this is in the mud, down and dirty, this is the price that we're going to go do this work for. We want this work. We want this scrubbed facility, folks. And the last time it came up, we bid clear through 2035 and offered to go beyond that. So I don't want to hear the predatory pricing stuff. I mean, I don't know how far you have to keep going forward. I will say one thing, when the trucking was brought up earlier, our trucking bid in here is solid for the five years. As far as I know, Arch Vipers is not. They've got to go rebid this thing in 2022, because it was a three-year deal. We were told last time in the comparison, it was a five-year deal against our five-year deal. Well, the trucking wasn't. It came up for rebid two years into the gig. So you've got two more, unless you do something different besides three-year reopeners, you've got two more trucking reopeners inside the Arch bid that I just estimated here, because I don't know what they are, unless somebody knows.
One of the things that we did ask for was a copy of the trucking contract, the bid, so hopefully they'll have that.
Yes, we'll do that, sir. And all your questions, Corporation Counsel, are great questions. I'm saying, please, you know, let's, let's have Alex, or get, track down the folks that you're looking for and get the answers you want, and anything else that you need answered. We want folks comfortable to do it. It makes sense. Again, it's huge to us to lose scrubbed units. Love to keep Daulman 1 and 2, but I'm not going to argue those. But 3 and 4, they're jewels, folks.
Any other questions from council members on this? Okay, I think we have a motion for debate. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Present.
All right, motion carries with one present. Thank you, folks, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Public Safety, 2019-502, an ordinance authorizing purchase of Brazos site licenses and hosting fee to support Tyler Technologies' Brazos e-citation product for an amount not to exceed $114,675 for the Springfield Police Department.
Move to consent, please.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Public Works, 2019-506, a resolution notifying the State of Illinois Department of Transportation that additional $591,240 motor fuel tax funds may be spent for maintenance of streets and highways under the Illinois Highway Code for calendar year 2020 for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second.
Any discussion?
Oppose the motion?
For consent. Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for consent.
Finance, 2019-505, an ordinance authorizing a two-year agreement, RFP number CC20-07, with Insurance Program Managers Group for third-party administrative, administrative services pertaining to workers' compensation claims for the City of Springfield from January 1, 2020 through December 31, 2021.
Move to consent.
Second.
Any discussion?
Two questions, sure, go ahead. Is this a continuing third-party contractor? And second question, what was the contract amount for the prior contractor or the prior period? And if there's no one here to answer those questions, just get those answers to Coordinator Tim Griffin. And I just make a comment, it's really helpful, City War Lightning Power is very dependable on putting prior contract prices, amounts, terms in the write-up for the ordinance, and it's really helpful when, I guess this one is coming from Office of Budget Management, it's really helpful to have that information when it comes to the city council for review prior to the meeting. Thanks a lot for follow-up.
So I guess that question would be for Director Kuzin, or, so Bill, do you want to?
This is actually, we put this out for bid, it's a replacement for CCMSI, and I don't, Mr. Zirkel might have more to add, it actually, they oversee the contract illegal, Christopher Nard.
Yeah, just briefly, I apologize, I was making a note about the earlier conversation. This is, this is a rebid or a new bid, and it's actually changing the TPA, and it was reviewed via both HR and I think also OBM, I think, went through, and this actually represents a savings. There was some reluctance, very honestly, because of CCMSI's long history with Springfield. However, the new group actually works with about 450 cities. So it seemed prudent, given the savings, to go ahead and give them an opportunity to perform. And right now, we're making sure that the, basically, that the case process is able to be, information is able to be easily transferred and so on. So I'm not sure if that answers your question, but there was a, basically, a competitive RFP review, and these particular people were equally qualified, but came in at substantially less.
That answers one of the two questions, which is that this is a new third-party administrator. Again, this may be good news, that this new administrator has bid a lower contract price than the prior administrator, but it's really helpful to get that good news out there, if it's good news, and if it's, if it's not good news, then we still need to just know what's happening. So if you can get us the prior.
We'll try to do a better job on that.
Thanks a lot.
Anybody else? Any other questions, or you want to come up there? No? All righty. No more questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2019-517, an ordinance authorizing contract with GovTempUSA LLC for financial management services and training within the Office of Budget Management for the period of January 1, 2020 through December 31, 2020, in an amount not to exceed $71,760.
Move to consent.
Sorry.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for consent.
General City Business, 2019-496, an ordinance to increase the number of class D local licenses by one for Tequaria El Dorado Incorporated, doing business as Tequaria El Dorado, located at 1374 Toronto Road.
Mr. Chairman, I move for passage. Does this need to go on a debate agenda?
No, consent.
For the consent agenda, then.
All right, sir, a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2019-497, an ordinance authorizing a decrease in the number of class D local licenses by one due to sale of businesses by ERJ Dining IV Incorporated, doing business as Chili's Grill and Bar located at 2891 South Veterans Parkway.
Move to consent.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2019-498, an ordinance to increase the number of class D local licenses by one for Brinker Restaurant Corporation, doing business as Chili's Grill and Bar located at 2891 South Veterans Parkway.
Move to consent. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Noted on four.
2019-499, an ordinance approving the reappointment of Nancy J. Bear to the Oak Ridge Cemetery Board of Trustees.
Move to debate.
Second.
Any questions, or is Nancy here? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2019-500, an ordinance declaring miscellaneous items as surplus property and authorizing disposal of said surplus items by auction, sold for scrap, donated, or recycled.
Move to consent.
Second.
Any questions? Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2019-503, an ordinance approving the tax increment redevelopment plan and project for amended Far East redevelopment project area, which was amended by adding additional properties.
Move to consent.
Second.
These should.
501.
Oh, I'm sorry. 2019-501, an ordinance designating the amended Far East TIFF redevelopment project area with additional properties.
Move to consent.
Second.
If you wouldn't, if you could, please place 501, and 503, and 504, all on debate.
Okay.
And that's to offer an opportunity, in case anybody wants to speak about it at the meeting.
Very much. Move for debate.
All right. Okay, any questions? Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for debate.
2019-503, an ordinance approving the tax increment redevelopment plan and project for amended Far East redevelopment project area, which was amended by adding additional properties.
Move to debate.
Move to debate.
Yeah.
Any discussion?
Second.
Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for debate.
2019-504, an ordinance adopting tax increment financing in respect to the tax increment redevelopment and project amending the Far East TIFF redevelopment project area by adding additional properties.
Move to debate.
Second.
Motion for debate. Any discussion questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2019-515, an ordinance declaring real property located at 2860 Adley Stevenson Drive, 3,000 Adley Stevenson Drive, 2830 Adley Stevenson Drive, and 2840 Adley Stevenson Drive to be surplus property and authorizing negotiation for sale and wavering concern provisions of Chapter 96 of the City of Springfield Code of Ordinances.
Move for consent.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for consent. All right, and then that concludes our business, right? Before we go to unfinished business, Director Vallesio would like to come up really quick and talk about the census, if there's no objection.
Thank you. In your places this evening, you've got a flyer that we distributed. We had a discussion with our census director for the US Census the other day, and they said they're a little behind on hiring, so they asked us if we would consider doing some recruitment days. So the library and community relations graciously have said that they would host some open lab hours, and those dates are December 18 from 10 to 12 at Lincoln Library, December 20 from 1 to 3 at Community Relations, and then in January 17, 1 to 3 at Lincoln Library, and then January 24 at Community Relations. The good thing is, they just upped the price that they're paying the census takers, so it's either between $14 and $21. Another thing they did is they just did a waiver so that this does not affect your SNAPs or any other benefits that you're receiving. So this is a really good thing, they're trying to get people, and we're important to make sure, if you have, if you speak more than one language, that's a real plus, too. But you can go online, or you can go, come to one of these labs that we're going to have. They're going to have someone from the census actually there, helping someone fill out the applications that are online. But the online applications are a pretty short essay, asking a little bit about your But the online applications are a pretty short essay, asking a little bit about your education, your experience. And so, we're just, if you would pass this on to your wards, we'd really appreciate that. And I think it's a great job for just about anybody.
Any questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
Val, do you know what the turnaround time is on getting, on finding out if you're hired?
No, that, good question. They said, one of the things is, is that you might apply, but you might not here for some time. That they're waiting, because they actually are still hiring some administrative positions, so they're trying to fill those first, and then they will go into the pile. And one of the things she told us is a little benefit, is say you can work many hours, and then you get pulled out much faster. But as far as a turnaround time, no, she told us that that's been a little slower.
Do you know what time period it is that they specifically want people to be working?
It's mostly going to be probably starting in May, May through August.
So like, if you're home for col, from college?
Right, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. School teachers, a lot of school teachers have approached us and said that that's something that was going to be helpful to them, so.
Great, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you.
See none, thank you. All right, unfinished business, anybody?
Tomorrow night, as a reminder, the Downtown DSI Holiday Walks continue every Wednesday before Christmas.
All right, Alderman, McMiniman?
Just a follow-up, we had a good discussion last week regarding the police and fire consolidation legislation that passed through the legislature during the veto session, Senate Bill 1300. Two elements of that legislation that we did not discuss last week, which I think are really important, are, number one, in trying to determine the impact of that legislation on the local police and fire pension funds, there were sweeteners in that legislation for Tier 2 employees. And the reason for the sweeteners for Tier 2 employees, those are all employees that were hired after January 1, 2011, was to keep the Tier 2 retirement system within the safe harbor provisions of the Social Security Administration. In other words, the reason that police and fires are not required to withhold Social Security is because the replacement retirement system is, meets certain minimum standards. But the concern was that the Tier 2 employees, over the course of time, because of the way the benefits are structured, they might come out of that safe harbor provision, and that would necessitate municipalities then, in addition to withholding for our local police and fire pension funds, would have to also withhold for Social Security. So that would be a very substantial new cost burden to municipalities. That was something that was explained in the committee that worked on this, including Brad Cole of the Interline Municipal League. And when they put out the report in October, and led up to the legislation that was passed during the veto session. So that's number one. So, now, and when they put in those sweeteners for retirees and their beneficiaries that were hired after January 1, there's no actuarial study made of the fiscal impact of those sweeteners. So it's speculative to know how that will play in with the benefits that we're going to get from the consolidated, of the police and fire pension funds. Now, we hope that, you know, one of the benefits will be that we'll get a better investment returns from the consolidated plan. And as we talked about last week, the most significant beneficiaries of that will be the smaller police and fire pension funds, which by statute have to invest 90% in fixed income investments, which only return 1, 2, 3% per year. But here's the thing that we need to pay attention to, and Mayor, you and I talked about this last night in Corporation Council also, we talked about the fact that, and this is really significant, under the consolidation, the authority to set the rate of return assumptions moves away from municipalities, and will be set by the central panel. So for all these years, from my point of view, we've really skated by setting our rate of return assumptions higher than what they actually turn out to be. And so that our cost burden is less than what it would otherwise be. Well, we're not going to have that freedom in the future. The city will not control the rate of return assumptions. It's going to be set by the state. Now, we don't know if they're going to be more conservative, which I hope they will be, or more loose with their rate of return assumptions. So the bottom line is, I stick to this point I made last week, that just like all these other, you know, there's light at the end of the tunnel type ideas where we can just continue with our sad ways, and underfund our pensions year after year in the expectation that somehow there'll be a turnaround. No, this latest consolidation is not light at the end of the tunnel. In fact, it might be the opposite of light at the end of the tunnel, for all we know. So, again, the bottom line is, I think we should not continue this trend of going deeper and deeper into debt. I think it's a mistake. And, you know, it's too bad that so few of us are here that have seen the false lights at the end of the tunnel. I'll just tick off a few of them. We've had a boom stock market for 10 years. Didn't turn us around. We had the very significant cutback of benefits in 2011, which we talked about before, with Tier 2 employees. That was supposed to, you know, be the turnaround, didn't happen. More locally, when we built Dollman 4, the lowest coal plant, the Blue Ribbon Panel that Jim, you were close to at the time, in 2008, 2009, that Mayor Davlin put together, the idea was that we would have enough generation capacity beyond our native load, and we'd sell on the open market to the wholesale market, and that would generate huge amounts of additional pilot funds that would then be pushed into our pension funds. Never happened. So, ultimately, we have to look to ourselves for an answer to avoid ever-growing pension debt. And I'll talk more about it during budget season. So I just wanted, main two points, there were sweeteners added for Tier 2 employees, all our police and fire. That's good news from the employee point of view, but it's, it's a difficult news for budgeting down the road. And then number two, the city will not control the rate of return assumptions going forward. We will not have our actuary and this City Council deciding what the appropriate rate of return assumption will be. It will be set by the state government. And that may be good or bad news, depending on how it turns out.
Alderman Redbatt?
Alderman, could you re-explain the Social Security contribution from Tier 1, Tier 2? Did you say that they're, they're going to add that to the Tier 2 side? Or what was that again? I didn't quite pick that up.
Well, the reason why certain teacher groups and police and fire do not contribute to Social Security is because, under federal law, they're exempted from it because the local retirement plans meet certain minimum standards. And the, this committee that the governor put together, when they looked at the Tier 2 benefits, that over the course of time, because...
Which are less than the Tier 1 benefits, right?
Which are vastly less than the Tier 1, both vesting and the benefit calculations in terms of cost of living increases every year, that over the course of time, the Tier 2 benefits might not be within the safe harbor.
Right.
That would be a permissible, that gives them waiver from, the municipalities waiver from withholding from Social Security.
Are they adding it, or they're not? Did you say they are or not?
So what they did was, with that legislation, Senate Bill 1300, they added some sweeteners to the benefit levels, having to do with cost of living increases.
Instead of the Social Security thing?
To avoid any future possibility of the municipalities having to do both, both a constitutionally protected local police and fire pension fund, and also Social Security on top of that.
Okay. That answered my question, thank you.
Any other unfinished business? Alderman, hand out.
Next week, just a reminder, I'm doing this for Jeanette and Tim Cookie Night after the council, so Tim's bringing his famous chili, so.
Well, you're quite festive tonight, Alderman.
Thanks, Santa.
I don't think I, yeah, I had to point that out.
It's the holiday season, I just want to bring a little cheer.
You brought a whole lot of cheer.
Hey, I like your ugly sweater, I mean coat.
Any other?
I dollar right here.
All right, any new business, or you got?
New business.
New business, go ahead.
Okay, two things. First of all, the budget hearing dates have been set for January 8th, 9th, 22nd, and 23rd. They will all be broadcast live on Comcast Cable, Channel 18. This will include live streaming and closed captioning. And if any of these dates change, we will let you know, but these are the four dates that have been decided on. So that's for the budget.
Chris, is it 5:30?
Yes, 5:30. Still think we should do it on Saturday, but whatever. And then, this is for Chief Reining. I had several calls over the weekend about people burning leaves.
And your ward?
Yep.
I usually get those from nine.
Several calls from the Laurel and Whittier area. And I guess that the, you know, there were, fire crews went out several times to the same address, and people were burning leaves in their fire pit, and saying they were, you know...
Yeah, they can't do that.
Okay, so just...
Correct.
They're roasting hot dogs, they can't do that?
They can't burn leaves in the fire pit and claim that they're roasting hot dogs.
As a starter even.
Yeah, you know.
Come on.
I mean, you can, technically, you can burn a newspaper as a starter, but, you know. And your ward butts up against that area, that's always a challenge, even for our members. I've spoke to that several times, that, you know, we don't always know where we go. We go to an address, so we have to ask if we're in the city or the county, and some of those places around yours, and your ward especially, so, yeah. But leaves, no.
Well, is the individual ticketed at that point? I mean, especially if someone went out several times.
Well, it's at the discretion of our crews to call for PD, and at that time, they can be given an ordinance violation. It's, it is city ordinance, the burn rule is city ordinance. The rules can be found on the city's webpage, under our department, under the burn rules. Recreational burns are clean, dry wood, not construction lumber, not garbage, not leaves. It's cut wood that's dry, that's clean. That's your recreational fire. Everything else in the city that you burn is against ordinance. Again, it can be found on the website. We get called quite frequently, multiple times, and our crews don't like to call the cops, but, you know, it can be done, and then they can be issued an ordinance violation, and they would have to appear here.
I think it needs to happen, when that, I mean...
Normally, I could just say, as the, as the end user, usually, the captain on the apparatus will explain the rules, give them kind of a rundown of what they can and can't do. I'm surprised if they went out more than once, that they didn't, usually that's an email, hey, we went to this, even if you don't call a police officer at that time. Used to, usually just email fire safety, put it on their radar, then they can go back and look through the history and see, oh no, we've been there way more than two times, been there several times. That's usually, because, believe it or not, they don't like going out to the same location either.
I can't imagine.
Yeah.
I mean, I walked out my door on Sunday afternoon, and I could smell it.
It's bad at times. Alderman Donilon's ward's probably the worst in the city as far as the smoke from people that live in the city that can't burn being affected by those who are three feet out of the city that can.
Well, I'm surrounded by Southern View and Jerome as well.
Yeah. Yeah, yours is also a challenge.
Yep.
Well, I appreciate the question, but, and Chief, I do want to say though, thank you, and I know you have personally gone out, and I've had calls, and I really appreciate the efforts, and, because it does impact people's health.
It's frustrating. It really is. It's frustrating for us, yeah.
Any other new business? Nope. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Real quick, and I hate to extend, I mean, I know everybody ready to go. My boy Nate, can you, can we, can you go over the process with furniture items that may be on our, on our way? What's the process for, to get that stuff picked up?
We have the large item pickup that Habitat for Humanity provides, and you can call their number, sorry, I don't have it on me right now. But, and then they will give you a date to have it set out, and then they'll pick it up the next day.
I appreciate it, thank you.
You're welcome, thanks.
They do a good job, too, by the way.
Yes, they do. And you can have, you can have three items twice, or six items once.
Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
Thank you.
I just had a call from a constituent, one of the street sweeper on North 7th. I thought I'd bring it up now than, rather than call you later, so.
They need a street sweeper on North 7th?
North 7th. I sang them.
They need it everywhere.
Maybe that area.
Get going, get those things running.
All right, any other, is that it for new business? Oh, Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, Reach Across America is at Camp Butler at 11 o'clock on Saturday.
All right, thanks. Anybody else? Citizens requesting to address the committee, have anybody signed up?
We haven't had signed up.
Somebody out there that wants to address the committee? See none, executive session, anything you need?
No, sir.
We're clear, okay. Most for her, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Clear adjourned.
What? Aw, damn, do we have a bet? I didn't even have a bet.
Yeah, I like that. Yeah, that's right. Yeah. What? Oh, crap. Well, I got two.
We got 75 bucks. Yeah. We'll keep that on the company.